Jason, would you lead us on the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you lead us in prayer, Larry?
We'd love to. Father God in heaven, we come before you tonight humbly bowing in your presence. And Lord, we ask that you give us your guidance in terms of how to lead this wonderful city and the people who are in it. Lord, may your presence be a part of our everyday lives. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Anita, roll call please.
Councilor Foster.
Easy.
Councilor Locke.
Here.
Councilor Lorenz.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
For here.
Mayor Proctencicola will not be here this evening, but a quorum is declared.
All right, modifications to the agenda?
Yes, sir, there will be one modification to the agenda. We would like to add F two appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Move to accept the modification to the agenda of adding item F two, Planning and Zoning Commission appointment.
Seven.
It's been moved and seconded to modify the agenda to add F two, the appointment of planning and zoning. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Councilor Foster.
Aye.
Councilor Locke.
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to modify the agenda adding F two appointment to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, approval of consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting from March third, 2022, and review and approval of accounts payable.
Motion to approve the minutes of regular meeting from March third and approve the accounts payable.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, the minutes of regular meeting from March third, 2022, and review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Councilor Foster.
Aye.
Councilor Locke.
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, proclamations, communications, and appointments. First one is proclamation for welcome home Vietnam War Veterans Day. Put my glasses in my truck. Nice.
You want me to?
I got it.
Okay.
Whereas the war in Vietnam was between November first, 1955, and May fifteenth, 1975, and greatly affected a generation of Americans and Coloradans. And whereas nearly three million American soldiers served tours of duty in Vietnam, with a total of more than nine million worldwide, and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty men and women died or were lost during the war. And whereas six hundred and twenty-three Coloradans were among the fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty who lost their lives, and of the twenty-five hundred listed as prisoners of war or missing in action, forty-one are from Colorado with twenty-four still accounted for. And whereas the wounds of the war were not just physical for many veterans, and by the end of the war, our veterans came home to a nation split by bitter divisions and faced painful treatment unbefating the bravery and dignity they displayed. And whereas it is appropriate that all Sandless Valley citizens remember the bravery of those who gave all, that their sacrifices serve, serves as a reminder of the cost of our freedom. And whereas on March twenty-ninth, we commemorate an anniversary of the Vietnam War and salute Vietnam veterans that served our country. Now therefore, the Montavista City Council do hereby proclaim March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two to be welcome home Vietnam War Veterans Day in the Sandless Valley and urge all citizens of the valley to take correct cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance. So we proclaim. And while we're doing this, stand up loud. Thank you for what you've done. Okay. Do we need a vote on that? Nope. Okay, good. Appointment of the planning to Planning and Zoning.
So we had four very good candidates that came in and were interviewed by the four of you this last week. I asked you each to rank them, and you guys each did and gave them back to me. And so in the final ranking, the three people that would be selected and going by the highest number of votes in order, excuse me, is Mr. Lauren Howard, Mr. Damian Ariano, and Mr. Justin Pepper. So if that's what you guys want to do, then we do need a vote on that. We have to s- Do we have- you need a motion first before we can discuss anything?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I move to approve this, in that order, for Planning and Zoning.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the candidates for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there any more discussion?
We had discussed making the fourth one an at-large. Is that still something that we all would want to do? To make Mr. F or an at- I'm sorry. We had discussed- The woman will, I, will have to, will have to look at their bylaws to see if you can do that. Okay. So.
Any more discussion? Anita?
Councilor Foster.
Aye.
Councilor Locke.
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to appoint Lauren Howard, Damian Ariano, and Justin Pepper to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right, we'll move on to citizen comments and special presentations. We'll do citizen comments first. Everybody got anything to say? It's a big crowd.
There's galloping tickets on the sidewalk.
All right, scheduled appearances. In order to be on this, included in this portion of the agenda, you have to file appropriate paperwork with the city clerk no later than noon by Monday prior to the meeting. Discussion about recall on District Attorney Alonso Payne.
So I've been visiting with our chief of police, who I just put my pen, who does have some concerns, but he cannot give his thoughts because he is on a statewide committee that oversees some of this stuff. And so, but I think that we, I have some of the same concerns that were specified by the City of Alamosa. And the lack of prosecution, the lack of care towards the victims. And they're just not taking these cases to get very good consideration. I don't know, I didn't visit with Mike, our attorney, about it. So I don't know, Mike, if you have anything that you'd want to add. There is, it's been interesting listening to some of the the background, because there's some people that still believe that what the City of Alamosa is doing is unconstitutional and that you cannot use funding to do that. That's not, that's not our issue. It was passed last night by their city council. I think that if you all were interested, we could do a letter of support for the recall election. But I would not recommend waiting in to look at doing an all-out campaign with our citizens. It's just kind of mucky water to be going after an elected official in this way as a governmental entity.
I kind of agree with that sentiment. I mean, there's some strong feelings about what should and shouldn't be done. And there is certainly a process for recall of an elected official. And I haven't researched it, but I, my concern would be spending taxpayer money to do that. And then can it get out of hand and who decides who to go after and who's, you know, what monies are spent for which elected official. And you can narrow an ordinance probably to some degree, but I don't know. I guess my take might be that we've got so many things we need to spend money on. I don't know if this would be one of them, but we've got our wastewater plant, we've got a whole lot of things going that I think probably need more priority than this, but there's, and I've already heard rumors of people in different organizations that are probably going to challenge that, that ordinance from a constitutional standpoint. National organizations are. And to get into those kind of fights, spend lots of money, lots of money. And I'll just talk for a little bit, but in center, we got into a recall issue probably five to seven years ago and all the way to the Supreme Court. And you had two different boards that were elected. One on the recall elected the other folks out. The folks that got recalled out challenged it. And SIRSA was representing the board that I guess I was behind or they were behind me. I'm not sure how you do that. But that case went to the Court of Appeals and went to the Supreme Court. And each side probably spent a hundred grand on legal fees. So it doesn't take a lot of people get upset, whether it's a state organization or a federal organization. You can jump into a lot of money. ACLU, those kind of organizations, have got a lot of money behind them and they, they've spent a lot of money. And there's a lot of nonprofits. In that case in center, there was a nonprofit that got involved in it. And everybody was suing everybody about everything and at least a hundred grand on each side. So you know, if you were to just say, well, let's just handle the recall and it didn't get any further than that, that might be one thing, but I've seen them go out and just get out of control. So I suppose if you know, the board wanted to get deeper into it, I can do some research and check it out. If that's the way you want to go, I, I, I just my take is we've got a whole lot of other things that probably the town needs to spend money on, and I don't know if that's, would be a high priority, but but you let me know what you think you want to do, if you want to go that route, and I'll try and do some research. I just know that you're pushing the envelope when you do pass an ordinance like that, and it's going to get challenged at some point, and you're going to spend money in defense of that ordinance. So.
I think we should research it a little more personally because of issues that we've already had. But we want to make sure we're doing this the right way, if we're going to do something about it. Because I don't, I agree with Mike. We've got a lot of other projects that we have to have done and I, we don't think that's the dog I want to chase.
Yeah, I, I think you're, you're pushing the envelope pretty good. And whether we want to spend time, money, litigation, and all that stuff, I, I, I don't know. But you guys tell me what you want me to do, and I'll try and do it.
I think I'd be up for a letter of support. I'd also like to look at other options if we can beef up the invisible code in the meantime and send more cases before the city judge and with the city attorney prosecuting. And just sidestep the DA. He's not going to do his job. And in the meantime, we need to deal with that legal ways. That's one way we can.
Well, good point. I was going to give you some of my report, but the state is ratcheting, ratcheting down the laws so that what used to be a class three felony might be a four, what was a four is a five. And, and I was having that discussion with the city judge just the other day in that we're going to get a lot of, not serious stuff, but a lot of misdemeanors and lower-class felonies are going to get dumped into county or municipal, one of the two, as it stands. And, and of course, we are probably a lower criminal case court. We're, we're not into the heavy-duty stuff. But the heavy-duty stuff is getting ratcheted down to, to lower penalties. And then, and we're going to get stuck with a lot more cases, probably in the middle range. Right now, we're still kind of minor offenses in city court. And you know, that's okay to some degree, but pretty soon it's going to be, we're going to get the water table raised on us to some degree. And we're going to be prosecuting more than we normally would. And a little bit higher penalty-type stuff. So, and that's already coming down the pike. But certainly there is a concern, and I think I listened to the Alamosa stuff a couple of weeks ago, and, and not too many people were concerned with a shoplifter necessarily, or a minor harassment, those kind of charges. I think their concern was the serious felonies were getting dealt down and nothing's happening on some of those cases and victims aren't being properly notified. And and that's probably a concern of, we're never going to be doing a murder case or anything like that. So you, so you have that area of concern on the more serious charges, I think, is where Alamosa's coming from.
Yeah, and no doubt. And that's why we do a letter of support for the recall, but in the meantime, we handle what we can.
Right. And we're going to get more cases dumped on us, if you will, for sure, just the way it's happening right now. So. But good point on that.
Anybody else?
I don't think there's anything to be said about Mr. Payne that hasn't already been said. I think most agree that he's not doing a good job. But I also know that our money isn't that we don't collect money from Montavista Citizensdale from pretty Valamosa. So as much as I want our court system improved, I want our just, I want, well, I want our legal system back to a justice system. I don't think it'd be right for us to spend our money on it. A strong letter of support, I think, would be appropriate.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Good. Letter of support on it?
Well, I'll draft something up and work with Mike, and we'll have that in at the next meeting. You guys can take a look at it. And it would be, what, to support, just a generic, supporting the recall of him and not supporting the actions of the City of Alamosa.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Next discussion is on the wastewater rate increase. Mr. Vance?
Good evening, council. Tonight I wanted to bring forward to you as a presentation for the public to talk about our sewer rate study and the pending project that's going to create, where the city's going to have to go from a lagoon system to a mechanical plant and therefore have to start ratcheting up our rates on our sewer bills. So I'm just going to read this so I don't miss anything. On March ninth, 2022, Nick with Element Engineering presented a rate study again to city council, and a very good discussion took place. And I would like to make council aware and see if you would be willing to move forward on a rate increase. In February of 2020, the city, Montavista Water, wastewater permit expired. We were administratively, it's, wow, let me start all over. Holy cow. In February 2020, the Montavista wastewater permit expired, and we were administratively extended by the CDPHE. That extension carried more stringent requirements in regards to our metals and other things such as ammonia that our lagoon system can't meet. These metal limits put our plants into noncompliance and a cease, desist order was issued. In early 2021, the city has continually worked with state officials to correct the situation. In order to meet the current requirements, it was determined that a fully mechanical plant would be necessary to replace the lagoon system. The city has then started to work with the USDA and their funding program to assist us in obtaining the required compliant wastewater treatment facility. All the preliminary paperwork has been submitted, and we are currently waiting on a letter of financial responsibility from the USDA. However, in order to be fully prepared to meet those financial obligations, the city needs to start implementing a rate increase. As part of the city's wastewater master plan, the city asked Element to provide a rate study that would address the estimated financial burden to the city and determine what the user rates would be needed to carry the operational and debt service for the new facility. That rate study has been presented to the city council for a few times, and the last was at a work session on March ninth. The rate study proposes a three-to-four-year interm, incremental. Boy, oh boy.
Estabendal.
Thank you, a rate increase. The issues that are there, until we know what the funding package from the USDA, the City of Montavista, we don't know exactly what the amount will be needed. We know that the estimated cost for the project is thirty million dollars. This includes the decommissioning of our two current wastewater facilities, including the removal of the biosolids at each facility, which is a huge expense, the consolidation of the two plants into, with a force main, and the design and construction of a new facility. Tonight I would like to propose to council that we hold two public meetings during the month of April to discuss the project with the public and to answer any questions they might have. I would propose that the first of these public meetings to be held on Tuesday, April fifth, and the second to be held in conjunction with a regularly scheduled council meeting scheduled for Thursday, April twenty-one, 2022. This would allow our citizens to interact directly with city council and city staff at the same time so we can adequately address their concerns and questions. Once these meetings are completed and we have completed revisions to the budget and a better understanding, hopefully, of where our rates need to be, and using the rate study as prepared by Element Engineering, we would present a resolution to raise the rates at the first meeting in June for implementation in July, 2022, covering the billing period of June sixteenth to July fifteenth, and then carrying over through every month after that. Since I cannot read tonight, I will just go at, right now, the way we are estimating funding, which is a conservative forty percent grant from the USDA, sixty percent loan from the USDA. We are expecting that in order to meet our debt service and operation expenses, that the base rate for our wastewater plant and sewer would be increased from eighteen dollars and thirty-nine cents to fifty-five dollars and seventeen cents per month. That's an increase of thirty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents. We have talked about a three to four years, and as we go, it was discussed during the work session that maybe the three-year would be the best. So as it stands right now, the first year implementation would be to raise the rates from eighteen dollars and thirty-nine cents to thirty dollars, fifty-five cents per month. So, and with that, I would open it up for council for any questions and see if I can do a better job of asking, answering questions that I did reading. So. Any questions? Unfortunately, it's something we're going to have to do. The project is extremely expensive, and it covers a wide range of actual smaller projects that have to take place. And it's best for us financially if we just tackle them all at the same time. If we do the plant now and then try to decommission the plants later, those costs associated with the decommissioning will just continue to rise. Okay, and then we'll be faced with that and having an operational expense at the new wastewater facility. So for us, it's just better to tackle it all and get it done.
So all those projects are inclusive in this deal?
Yeah, they all have to be inclusive in this deal. That's what we're proposing. And that's why that, that total thirty millions is so, so large.
And also you said operationally, it's more expensive to run a mechanical plant than what we currently have.
Far more. Every process that's done naturally through a lagoon system now takes place in a very controlled environment with blowers and aeration and draining and pumps, and the electrical costs alone will triple from what we do right now. So.
We have no choice.
Not really. We don't, unfortunately. Do the meeting dates sound good to council? April fifth is the Tuesday before the first meeting in April. And I was kind of thinking that one, we'd do more as an open house, just kind of open it up, have some slides up on the projector, have some boards so people can look at, and then have some handouts, try to design a little brochure that they can take home with them and look at and do it that way. And then the meeting on the twenty-first would actually be during the city council. You'd open up your meeting like you normally would, and then we would go ahead and move into a public meeting to specifically address those rates and make sure that we're good. And ideally, we would have results from USDA as far as what our letter would be, and we could make modifications. But if nothing else, then we continue to go with this line, make that first increase. And then if our funding level changes, let's say instead of a forty-sixty, it turns to a fifty-fifty, then we can adjust future rate increases and reduce those as we go. If that makes any sense. So I would open it up for any of the audience members, if they have any questions.
So Rob, I've got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So- since we're doing this, so if this rate increase would be in July, are we gonna maintain that same rate until July of twenty twenty-three?
That would be for council to decide, but yes, I do believe we could do that and just plan a July increase for the next three years.
Okay, and then, and then we won't have to bring it back to council for this increase for the next segment of the increase for twenty twenty-four and then the third one in twenty twenty-five?
Um, it would be twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and then twenty twenty-four. And I would, just for transparency, is to probably bring those forward to council, especially if we don't have the final what we need as far as what our our rate actually will be, you know? If the USDA does a fifty percent grant and fifty percent loan, that reduces our cost dramatically so we could actually pass that on to our customers, which are residents. So I'd like to be able to make that change as we go. So, I, it, unfortunately, dealing with the USDA, there is no set, you know, we're gonna know by the end of the month what that total is and just when they give it to us. So, I think it's important that we move forward now and at least start doing it because it is a huge increase and we need to prepare and we need to get things ready. And that's one of the conditions for the USDA loan is that as a city, we are taking the steps to make sure we can cover that debt. And we have to start that now. We can't do it after the construction starts.
Okay, and then with the so we've got the plant, is there gonna be anything that we're gonna have to do with adjustments or other construction in our street or for the homes?
Yes, not in the homes overall, but the one big adjustment is folks that live out on Sherman and Spruce and Pine out that way that utilize the Veterans Wastewater Facility. Those will all be pumped into a lift station and then force main all the way back to the Henderson plant, which is off of Henderson Road. So, it won't actually affect anybody's house, but the delivery to us will change dramatically.
So where will that lift station be?
It will have to be right there where it comes out at the current wastewater facility. So outside, right there by the canal at Home Lake, we'd have to do it there and then transfer everything back. So, and we do have a lift station now at the headworks, so we could possibly reutilize that. So, and just change the piping there and start forcing it back. We'd have to change the pump side, of course.
One time I thought we had another special meeting on this, on Tuesday five, but I'm not seeing it on my calendar. Does that, is that right, wrong? Did I lose track of that? I thought we were doing attorney interviews on that day.
So, that, you're correct.
Uh-oh.
But, but to move that up to March the thirty-first. And that's and that was to accommodate one attorney that, um, we're looking at applying so that he could go on vacation.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't think we gave our, our people vacations.
Nothing like calling man.
I need the vacation.
I know, I find it, yeah.
Who will be interviewing Judge Kendis that night too? Both?
Yeah.
He said that's now on the thirty-first?
Yes, March.
Thank you.
Start at five thirty?
Five thirty, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we now need to have a motion on that for, to have the work session for a public meeting?
Public meeting, yeah, I think we should.
And then we'll have to do some advertising and we'll put it on Facebook and we'll do something in the newspaper and we'll make sure people are, are aware of it and hopefully they're interested enough to come.
Format sound good to everybody? Do it kinda as an open house? Do a small presentation, have some boards, let them be able to see what the prices are, ideas of what we have to do.
Will we have any kind of a drawing or anything of that?
We won't have anything designed yet. We, we can't necessarily start design until we have a contract with USDA.
Is this similar to the plant in Durango?
It could be. It could look like the one that they're constructing right now in Center as well. So Center is doing another plant, um, and outside of their, um, current I guess it's, um, Staley's is up there, probably Marsarch or whoever it is, um, their starch plant, but they're doing one right next to it right now. Hoping ours will be a little different. I'm not sold on that exactly. Um, but yes, very similar and not ex- not as extravagant as the one in Durango. That one is extremely extravagant, very nice, but extremely extravagant, so.
That one has a burner on it, right?
Yeah, yeah, and, and we will be doing an activated sludge plant. So, we'll actually be doing something very similar, but not, not to that extreme. We don't need that.
What are you proposing for time? Five to six thirty?
I was thinking five to, five thirty to seven thirty or whatever.
Five thirty to seven?
Okay.
I mean.
Yep, that's fine.
You're not gonna get very many people.
Okay, five thirty to seven.
And we can certainly hang around if there are more people and more questions.
Sure, absolutely.
And that's for the Tuesday, April fifth meeting?
Yes.
If that's all right.
And the other one, you said just coincides with the regular council meeting?
That's, that way, the second meeting, um, during council meeting gives you the ability to make a vote and a motion where you can move this forward to a resolution. And that way, it gives you an opportunity to hear from citizens and actually react if that's what you choose to do.
Make a motion to move forward with the hearings on the rate increase for the sewer system as proposed.
I'm seven.
It's been moved and seconded to move forward with the open house and the meeting at city council in regards to the wastewater plant. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counsel Foster?
Aye.
Counsel Locke?
Aye.
Counsel Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to hold a public meeting April fifth from five thirty to seven on the wastewater rate increase.
All right. Thank you, Rob. Discussion on spending some CARES Act money to clean the Valley Three Theater.
So, excuse me, we had a good, I think, discussion, work session this last week with members of the board for the Valley Theater. Um, they're making some improvements and I said that we would have the electric and, um, the electric exit signs and emergency lights done by the Mountain Festival. It won't happen.
It might.
It still might. So we're working with that, with that electrician trying to get that done. Um, in addition to that, we thought that a good cleaning would be sufficient, would help, um, the facility itself and steam cleaning the seats. And we can use CARES fund, funding for that because it would be under the guise of COVID, getting all the germs out of there. So, the committee itself is going to be, um, getting an estimate. Anita, did we?
I, I did meet with Kelly today and took her over there. Um, she's with White Glove Janitorial and she will be having an estimate to us Monday morning as well.
So.
And she's able to steam clean all that, clean it all up?
Yes, she is.
Wipe down all the handrails and all the, the seat uh, arm rests and scrub the floor good and that sort of thing.
But we do not have an estimate yet.
No, we don't.
How much CARES money do we have available to us?
I have to look at our
Great.
How much CARES money do we have left?
Are we talking Arpa?
CARES, CARES.
First one, I don't know.
I'm sorry, councilman, I don't have an answer.
Okay.
Well, we're gonna need a motion for that one.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and move that we spend some of our CAREX money to help get the theater cleaned.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, seconded that we utilize some CARES Act money to clean the Valley Theater. I think we need to add in there
A limit of some sort.
Yeah.
But without an estimate, I don't even, I, I can't imagine.
I don't either.
I mean, I know what it should cost to clean a house, but I have, I can't even imagine what it would cost to clean a theater.
I, I'm gonna suggest three thousand dollars.
How much?
Three.
I'm gonna bet you five.
Well, we can set it to whatever it is and if it's more than that, then they have to come back to council and we can approve additional funds.
Well, why don't we set it at three then if that's?
So amend your motion.
Okay. I move that we use up to three thousand dollars of our CARES Act money to help clean the Valley Theater.
As an amendment, so the motion will
Second the amendment.
So, have the motion to use CARES Act money with an amendment of three, to limit it to three thousand dollars? And the second, is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counsel Foster?
Aye.
Counsel Locke?
Aye.
Counsel Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to allow up to three thousand dollars of the CARES Act funding to clean the Valley, Valley Three Theater.
So we are, no financial report tonight, correct? Okay. I always forget her, so I'm gonna make sure. Staff proposals, reports, and actions. City attorney.
Hey, Mayor, Council, um, don't have too much, uh, tonight. Uh, some of the things we did last month and some things this month. Reviewing the engineering agreement with Rob on the wastewater stuff. And these, uh, and we do every one of them with grants. You've got these long, I think that agreement was thirty-eight pages, so those things are a little bit labor intensive, but you gotta go through them and you gotta make sure we're good to go. Uh, also did up a memorandum with the Connor Dog Clinic on handling some fees, um. I think that was pretty straightforward. We had a claim coming in, come, or come in from a company for Lumen Technologies and talked to Rob about it and it sounded like it was way out of town, so I basically sent them a letter saying I thought they were barking up the wrong tree and maybe talked to the county and haven't heard anything about that since that, uh, came up. And almost every week, there seems to be some little problem that we need to work on. We had a little problem on some property and access through alleys and I spoke with Gigi and Rob and I think we're gonna, a couple options have come up that I think we're gonna be able to get those done. But constantly, little problems come up, we try and address them and hopefully the, uh, problems don't get to, get to your desk. Also looking at other, a couple of other contracts for the city manager. Wanted to address a little bit, uh, I saw in our municipal league flyer that comes out every couple of months, there was some litigation in Boulder about injury to a person over a sidewalk. The court finally determined that Boulder was not liable and one of the things that they had was a maintenance type schedule and a, an improvement process that they had in place. I, I, I think we've got something like that, but I just wanted to make sure that we did. The sidewalk in Boulder was like off two and a half inches or something. And I walk around quite a bit and I know some of our sidewalks are in pretty rough shape, so I just wanted to, if we didn't have something in place about maintaining and or replacing sidewalks, I think it'd be a good idea to do that. That seemed to be the one issue that the court addressed to save Boulder from any liability. So I just wanted to bring that out and I, I think we have something, but I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of that. If we don't have something, then let's get it in place maybe. Courts are getting busier. We're, got a lot more, um, had a very busy court on Wednesday. And of course, as summer comes into place, we're gonna have probably more and more cases and, uh, code violations are plentiful, a lot of young folks coming in. And we're sending those folks to the lead and or circle program. And people come back, the kids come back, they do letters of apology, they, they do some counseling and pretty dang impressed with, we haven't had a repeat offender come back and these young kids take it seriously, other than just having mom or dad pay a fine. They have to go do something and spend some time and, um, and been pretty darn successful. I've been very pleased with it. We also have got quite a few code violations coming up, cleaning people's yards up. And those are all working very well. Just sometimes takes a little bit of a hammer over to folks to get, get their places cleaned up. And we spoke a little bit with, uh, Ma- uh, Councilman Lorenz's thing about what's gonna happen. Are we gonna end up probably doing more cases in city court? And I think that's gonna happen. The laws are already coming into place. I was able to speak with the judge a little bit about it and, uh, and the laws are kinda just moving down into the less serious, less serious type of situation. And so, and there's new rules on bonds, there's new rules on bench warrants and a whole lot of things are coming down. So, gonna have a lot more things to deal with in the city court. The thing that was kind of interesting that's been going on and I've got to give some uh, kudos to the police department and, uh, the code, code enforcement officer, Officer Hill I spoke to about three months ago and they were concerned with places that they knew drug activity was going on, they go They were concerned with places that they knew drug activity was going on, they go try and arrest somebody or do something. And, uh. That person leaves the premises and then here comes someone else in there. And typically, in order to determine if a property is a nuisance, you sometimes have to go into district court. To do that and you spend a bunch of money doing that. Um, get into district court, easily spend five thousand dollars litigating the issue of what a piece of property might be. And, and the landlords and the owners of the properties, their, their take always is. I don't know what was going on, I just rented the place. Um, and so. In talking to Officer Hill and the code enforcement officer, I said, I don't. Think the city wants to spend that kind of money going into district court on every case, the, a house. Where there's drug activity going on, and so. Uh, I said, let's work on our nuisance staff ordinance and see how that works. Bearing in mind, you always have the landlord or the owner saying, you know, I just rented it, I thought it wasn't my problem, I don't know what's going on there. So, we, the officers have gotten fairly aggressive about it and we had, uh. Uh, so far, four, four cases that have come before the city court here. And, um. And part of the problem too is that a place that isn't, if the landlord doesn't care about it and doesn't care who's in there. It usually gets trashed along with the drug activity, so it's sort of a. Got junk cars, got weeds, nothing gets taken care of with those properties. So, they've been citing both, you know, code violations of junk cars and everything else, along with. The, uh, drug activity and therefore it's a nuisance to the community. Um, we've had four cases. And, uh, so I've told the folks, the owners, the owners get cited, which is the way to get the problem resolved as far as I can tell, cause. If you affect the owner's pocketbook, you may have a chance of getting things cleared up. So, they generally come into court and, you know, oh, I didn't know anything was going on, I, you know, I just rented it, kinda thing. So I said, well, okay, you get those people out of there, so you go evict them. And almost every one of these situations, the landlord is theoretically paying the utilities and paying the city bills. But almost every one of those are all behind, so by the time they take the folks to court, get them out of there, pay the back utility bills. These landlords are down a couple grand. So, I've told them, you go get rid of the people that are in there and you clean the place up. And we're gonna impose a fine. And we're starting out at seven hundred dollars and we're gonna go up. And you can do it on each day theoretically, but, um. So the last several months, that's what I've told people you gotta do. Get rid of the people that are in there, they're a problem. Police know it, we all know, so get them out of there. So, the landlords, to my surprise, even though they say they don't know what's going on, they've gotten rid of the people. They've cleaned the places up and they're paying a fine. And I said, you come back again, don't tell them you don't know what's going on, cause the fine's gonna double and it's gonna triple. So, we've had four and we've got one left and we're four for four, cleaned them up. So, again, kudos to the police and we hadn't ever tried this, our ordinance, it's never really been done. In this fashion to, um, somewhat create a nuisance based on the owners. And the folks that, that they have in there. But, we're four for four and the judge is, is with me on them and. So, and we're collecting some pretty good fines and the folks are cleaning it up. Not to say they might not have other people come in there, but. It's worked surprisingly well at this point and, uh, we got one more left to go the next round and so we'll see, but. When it costs the landlords money to get rid of people and to pay utilities and pay back, you know, city charges and all that. I think we've got their attention and, and I'm pretty pleased with the process and. Again, chief, tell your officers and folks that things are just working pretty, a lot better than I thought they would and a lot less expense. Than going into the district court and trying to do things kinda the hard way, so. Anyway, um, let's see. I think that's pretty much, um, everything I've got, um, I don't know if council has any questions, but. We, um. Things are going pretty good.
I have a question.
Sorry, no questions, Martha. No.
The, um, the ordinance that you're using to, uh, bring the landlords into, into the equation. To make it their responsibility to, does that count for, uh, does that work as well with business rentals? As well as, cause we have, I mean, we have buildings with broken windows and. Just, just a lot of, you know, and, and those are.
Yeah, I think some of that could, some of that could apply, you bet, we can try it, I mean, you know. If a piece of property is not taken care of, um, and it's becoming a blight, I think we can pro- proceed under that ordinance and. You know, worst case scenario, it doesn't work, but we, if we don't try it, we, we don't know.
I'll just use blight as an example, blight, drug house, I don't, you know, whatever. Uh, crime du jour, uh, I just wanna know that if, if it would apply for, for business rentals as well.
Yeah, it would.
Okay.
Yeah, and if we see some that need some help, I mean. You know, if a lot of properties are absentee landlords and they don't know and maybe, or maybe they don't wanna know what's going on with their property if it's not rented. The windows get broken, people break in and stay there and the place just goes to heck. And, uh, sometimes people may have inherited the properties and so they don't have much to invest in it, but. The, the thing that i- is most important is getting them notified and kinda getting them. Uh, to, to understand that we see that there's a problem. Most landlords, if you start citing them and starts costing them money. Or time, having to come from Colorado Springs to deal with a matter in city court. You, you're probably gonna get some attention and, and a lot of times it's, it's that, just addressing it and. And a lot of them will, are pretty cooperative, I mean, I, I've been really overly surprised at how well some of these things have gone, so. But yes, to say. And we'll try and, if, if we need to and we'll try it, doesn't work, then we, we know we gotta go a different route, but. All right, any, any other questions?
On a different note, as we get more and more spillover from Alamo's, uh, the homeless issue that we have. I know we have, uh, no soliciting ordinance, but do we need to beef that up to deal with panhandling? I know here a while back, there was a guy begging out in front of the library and people were afraid to get out of their cars to go into the library, cause he was so aggressive with it.
We might have to.
The chief that shows up.
Yeah.
Please show up when they get called, but.
Yeah, well, that's something we may have to look at and I, I do not know what the solution is to homelessness, I mean. I see cities going, well, we're gonna move you out, but then we've gotta provide a place for you, I mean, I don't know, that gets a little bit scary. I mean, who can afford, small towns can't afford that kinda stuff and. You don't want people sleeping on the park benches and, I mean, those are for the public, in my view, and, um. Uh, I don't know, it, it's, it's coming to Monte, if it isn't already here, so.
Yeah, it's coming.
It, it, it's here.
And we need to do something to handle the panhandling issue, but nothing else.
Right, right.
We, we've got a young man that panhandles around our business and, uh, I've started putting him to work.
Yeah.
And he goes away.
Yeah.
He'll go come and ask for, you know, a cigarette or he'll ask for a soft drink or he'll ask for money. And I'm like, well, my bathroom needs cleaning, um, you know, or just, I've just come up with stuff and he still comes around, but not as often.
I got lots of work too on stuff.
Well, I'll send you.
But nobody wants to do that, you know?
I'll, I'll, he, he does it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
I, I can address, so we've done a lot of research on the panhandling. The US Supreme Court came out with a case, uh, with, and basically said panhandling's not illegal. If it's done on public property, as long as they're not aggressive. And they're basically, just, you know, me and Panhandling say, hey, you got money and stuff like that, it's not illegal, they, they've shot down. So you rarely see what we all refer to as panhandling. Now, there's, you can put a few restrictions in. But if it's on public property and they're not being like aggressive in your face, preventing you from going in or out of the business or whatever. They're not letting you, uh, it's, it's unfortunate, I, when, actually, when it came up with that, I started doing a bunch of research on that. There's just not a lot now. We've, we have been working on some ordinances, um, some up. Dating some ordinances on, uh, like some of the homeless issues like camping, um, we've got one, in fact, I think it's, uh, I've sent it to. To Nina and Gigi and, and Judge Trillo's got it, yeah. But we've been working on some work and stuff, and we have a couple, um. Couple of cases that we have been working on and, and I, interesting when Judge Trillo said about the absentee owners. That is a huge issue, it is so difficult, uh. CSO Lopez has been countless hours trying to track down and find the owners of some of these properties. He's been working on them down on Fourth Street, like, for the last two weeks and finally tracked down the owner. And the owner actually showed up today, he's been in South America for a year. And just to get rid of some, some cars that are parked in the street, uh, Brandon Sanchez, cause the art team, of course. He just finally said, I'm, I'm gonna tag him and tow him, and he did. And then we, but it's just, it's just a constant battle trying to find some of these people and it, it's tough, we go to the county site. Send, you, you send mail or, or whatever and, and it, it's been a struggle, but, um, well, I'll talk more about what those guys have been doing, and get up here. Panhandling thing to your.
It's tough, Denver, every corner, there's somebody.
Absolutely, and.
Asking for money.
The script order shot that out and said, it's not illegal to ask people for money or, or whatever. If it's done on public property, folks are not aggressive and blocking the way, unfortunately.
Okay, folks.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
I have to just give him a bucket and a scrub brush and some soap and say the outside of the library needs to be cleaned.
Frankly, I don't want my wife having to deal with them.
(laugh) I understand that.
There's issues there that are. I mean, she has to call the cops, people can't use the libraries because they are aggressive.
Unida?
Good evening, Council. Um, so I don't have a whole lot for you this evening, um, just wanted to update you on a few things. We've only issued twenty dog tags so far this year. So I'd like to remind the citizens of Montevista to please get your dogs registered. Um, we do have it on our website, we have it as a public service announcement on the radio. Um, so we're trying to make sure that people know that they need to register their dogs. Um, with the new, um, MOU with Connor Animal Shelter. The, one of the agreements in there is that if a dog is adopted and it's going to a home within the city limits. Then they're going to take and issue a tag in exchange, um, in the MOU, we've worked out some things. So I've been working with Connor Animal Shelter to give them the information and as soon as that MOU is approved, then I will take some tags and. The, um, tag book over to them and they'll be able to start helping out in that aspect as well. Uh, we issued forty vendor permits for Crane Fest this year. Um, and that was, we had thirty-eight of them, or excuse me, thirty-two of them come in. Um, before the Crane Fest and then the remaining actually Stephanie collected at, um, Sky High when the Crane Fest came forward. So, we had a total of forty vendors that were registered with Sky High for the Crane Fest. We currently have a hundred and one court cases for the year. Um, court this last Wednesday was pretty busy, um, we seem to be seeing a lot more code criminal cases than traffic cases lately. So, um, expect that to go up quite a bit. Um, I've attended the URA and the One Cent Committee meetings. Um, and I'm currently helping Gigi and the URA locating the owners for the blight properties within our community and trying to work out something with them. For the URA. Other than that, it's, business is normal and answer any questions if anybody has any.
I do not.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Unida. Mr. Van Trum, hot seat. Maybe you can talk this time a little bit, so, um. I think I'll skip a little bit and probably address, um, what Mike, our city attorney, was talking about. I, I read that CML actually has quite a few good things in there. And as far as sidewalks, just so council knows, sidewalks are addressed in two ways. In the code, it states that the sidewalk is the responsibility of the property owner. They're responsible for their sidewalk. Um, for a maintenance plan, we have initiated monies from the One Cent that was just funded. Um, that was five thousand dollars the first year, we've increased that to fifteen thousand dollars this year. Um, as an effort to try to help our homeowners and our property owners to get their sidewalks up and I've already got. Five, six people that are interested in it this year. So we're gonna do that, we did two last year with the funds from that program, so. We'll keep moving and do what we can, um, the article that Mike was referring to. Talked about marking those areas of the sidewalk that are raised more than an inch, which is the two thousand ten ADA Act. Um, if that's something that council would like to do, um, I can start having staff go around and do that, mark them. Um, we can then maybe impose code enforcement, cause it's technically a code enforcement violation for them not to maintain their sidewalk. Um, we can do that or we can continue with our process, it's kinda whatever you think, but. Sidewalk maintenance is addressed two ways, one in the code and then we are also doing our part to actively. Try to get the sidewalks fixed through our One Cent. And that was one of the things that Boulder, you're only allowed, you can only do what your budget allows. So we're making an effort, so I think legality wise, I think we're doing okay. So, questions on the sidewalks? Okay, um. Part of the things that I was asked to do is something, this is a perfect year to kinda discuss this. Every year I come to you guys, um, in November, December timeframe and ask about running water for the city. Um, each year, we allow our citizens to go, to run water through their taps. And we allow up to fifteen thousand gallons free to do that, um. So this is one of those years where it really never got probably cold enough to have an out. Just an outbreak of frozen meters. We've processed right around twenty-five frozen meters this year is all we've done, so it's something that you as council. Could look at, um, if you wanna change that policy and possibly save some money. Um, I look at it as a benefit, um, we have a lot of different type structures, a lot of trailer houses. A lot of places where they're not, their basements or their crawl spaces aren't necessarily where they need to be. And without en- asking the property owner to go through an expense that many of them can't afford. Um, them being able to run a pencil size stream of water in the evenings when it's really cold. Keeps them from freezing up, keeps them in service, so it's, really, you're gonna weigh the lost revenue from ten thousand gallons a month. That those people would get versus the benefit to let them continue to have water service and down. Um, when the meters do freeze, if you remember, I think it was about six years ago, we had some really, really cold temperatures, middle of December through the middle of January. Um, for that thirty-one day period, I ran Public Works seventeen hours a day thawing meters. Um, we also contracted with two different contractors, um, to help us actually dig some of our mains because it froze from the house all the way out to the main and froze our main that we actually had to dig in three spots. Had to dig the city streets up and replace that section of main. So, when it does happen, it's too late to tell everybody to run water and then you're just running your crews ragged. And the other way is, there is a chance that we are wasting a little bit of money. So, I want you, we're coming to a close, that program ends the twenty-second of this month. But it is something to think about for next season, if that's something you want to either continue or not to. It's completely a policy decision that this council gets to make. I will bring it to counsel because, um, for my crews sake, you know, it's not really safe to have them run seventeen, eighteen hours every day for thirty-one days straight, and that's what we did. So, um, that was a lot of overtime, um, so we haven't had that, we haven't had those type of winter where we've had that extended cold spell either. So even in a year like this, and I would consider this a fairly easy winter for the valley, um, so had about twenty-five frozen meters is what the guys processed.
Could you give us a number on how much, it's actually being used, how much increase in?
I sure can, I can give you, yeah, I can.
And if you compare that cost with the cost of the line of meter, then we can decide what we wanna do. Or if it's worth it doing some other program that we help insulate the meters that are freezing.
I absolutely can do that, counsel.
And my question, Rob, on that would be, cause we know that timeframe, how much water do they actually use?
It's a, it's a, I can tell you this, it's a program that not all of our citizens use. Um, if they don't use the water, they don't get a credit, so it doesn't go on their bills for June and July. It's just that period from December, December twenty-second to June twenty-second, you're allowed up to fifteen thousand gallons under your base charge. Anything beyond that, your normal base charge includes five thousand gallons.
Well, so, but we would be able, cause you guys check the meters, right? So we would be able to tell, is fifteen thousand too much? I mean, are they using, so, you know, like ten thousand or eight thousand, so we could lower it maybe?
We can check that, we can also lower it. When that program was initially installed, um, back in two thousand seven, I think it was, um, it was tested, um, basically turned the tap on, let it run through a corrugated tester and then for one hour, and we got what that gallon was, and then we just did the math to say this is what we use in fifteen thousand gallons. If you do a pencil size stream, that that's what you will use in a, in a month. So, it, it was tested back when this policy first went in. And it's an older policy, like I said, it started in two thousand seven. So, um, some bad news is I did send off, um, our proposal for the generator for the SEP program. It was rejected, so Monday, Tuesday of this next week, I will send the rest of our proposals to them. They didn't want quite the amount of work that I did on the generator. Um, so I will send a much more concise report on the other items and see where they bite on that. So, um, the next item on my list was mosquito spraying, counsel's not aware of this. Um, every year, you are aware of this part of it. Every year, we offer a do not spray to our residents for those people that are opposed to the chemicals that we use to control mosquitoes. Um, unfortunately, and actually quite sadly, during this last season, um, we actually had residents actually impede our drivers and threaten them for spraying. Um, it got to the point where I actually wound up, towards the end of the season, I would actually follow the drivers on that one particular route each night and make sure that those property owners did not come out and harass the drivers. Um, I, I have a, I'm gonna have a meeting with Gigi and our staff. Um, we would like to continue the program because I do see the benefits, a lot of people have aversions to those type chemicals. So I see the benefits, um, and we would like to address it this year as more of a formal application instead of just calling in saying, hey, I don't, I wanna be put on the no spray list, that they actually have to fill out a formal application, um, go through a little bit of training to understand the processes that we use. Because when we spray, for those areas that we don't spray, we don't turn the machines completely off because it's hard on the engine, but we do turn the sprayer off. It's controlled by a toggle switch, it's either on or off, super simple. They hear the buzz of the engine and they think we're spraying, when we're actually not. And that was the problem we had with these property owners, and it was two of them last year, so. Um, so I, I'm gonna try to get that, we're gonna do that. If it continues this year, we'll definitely get the police department involved in it. And I hate to say it, but I think I'll make a recommendation to counsel to stop the program altogether. If the citizens can't be respectful, not the mosquito spraying, but the idea, cause every citizen gets charged that on their water bill, is that we just simply stop offering, you know, we're not gonna spray your house, we're just gonna spray their house and go and make those people deal with, you know, whatever they need to do to protect themselves. So, we're trying to do it as a service and it really got out of hand this last season, really did, so. Um, I, I, I don't know, counsel has any strong feelings on the mosquito spraying one way or the other. Um, we have a lot of different things that are going on, we have anything from turtles to bees to a few folks that actually have a medical, um, they're allergic to the chemical. There are other chemicals that we've tried to use, it just don't, they don't do as well as the chemicals we use, the melathein and stuff, we use biomass de-melathein, and melathein is by far the better of the two products. And some of them are more citrusy, the more natural stuff, just doesn't really work on the mosquitoes the way we'd like them to, so.
I feel strongly that I want you to keep it going.
Well, I, I think the majority of our populace wants us to keep it going as well. I just, it, it really, it scared one of our drivers pretty bad.
Well, the great thing is, is the truck is loud enough, I can hear it coming three or four blocks away. I go in the house and shut the windows.
That's the most.
And it dissipates, and then I go back outside.
Yeah.
So, maybe just put a fog horn on the truck inside. When you hear this, if you're one of, one of them have a problem, go in the house.
Let's not do the fog horn, it's, they get around late at night.
I was gonna say, we've, we've changed the spray from eight to one, that's, that's the, that's what it takes, eight o'clock at night. You have to remember, the people that are driving those trucks, they've already worked a full day. So they work the day, they go home, eat dinner, and they come back and they spray from eight until one. So, so I'd like it if people were respectful to them, but like I said, this last season was the first time that we've ever had that type of reaction.
Hopefully we won't have that this year.
I hope not, so. Um, some of the other items, um, we did apply for revitalization grant through CDOT. And we are looking for a multimodal improvement on one sixty in Sherman, so we're gonna be applying for that one as well. That one's due April fifteenth, I'm working with our engineer's element to get all the data together that CDOT's looking for. Gigi and I have already had a phone call with CDOT. Um, our project that we proposed is acceptable to them, so they told us to go ahead and move forward. So now we're getting the data together and we'll have that submitted by April fifteenth. And that'll basically create a sidewalk and, um, bike path from Marsh Elementary School all the way out to the city limits on Sherman. So that would include, um, the new Sky High facility. So there would be a hard surface trail that you could actually walk from town all the way out to Sherman if you chose to, so. And then my final thing on my report is a little bit of good news. Our, the city and the tree board was awarded a CTC grant for the, for tree planting in the tune of fourteen hundred ninety-five dollars. We did get our CTC and we'll have our Arbor Day celebration May twelfth this year. Any questions for me, counsel? Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Yep.
Chief?
Hey, Mayor, counsel? Um, mine won't be near as long as Rob's.
Sorry.
Um, just employees, employee updates, we hired, we did hire one new officer, Ann Robinson, who just retired from State Patrol. Started last week, um, she's in training this week, um, we actually have, uh, several officers in training this week, supervisor training. Got some good, bringing some good, um, leadership training, so we've got four in there this week. We still have one full position open, we're gonna, and we have four applicants, which is amazing. I mean, we rarely get one applicant, let alone, but we've got four. So we're gonna do testing at the end of the month here, uh, Bob's getting that set up. Uh, and then we're gonna do the detective testing the first week of April and hopefully have that in position by May first. And then, um, uh, we just had two officers that had returned from, uh, had, got some grants and sent them to some really good detective, new detective training, these got back from that this week up in Boulder, so, um, that was really good. And again, we've got four in supervisor training, this is part of an FBI, uh, it's called FBI Leader Training and they go all across the country doing these leadership trainings, it's a three-part series, so like one, one session this year, one next year. And then they actually get a little, nice little award that says, hey, you've attended all these three. It, it's, it's pretty top-notch training, I mean, they're, we, we get instructors from all over the United States that are like retired chiefs or sheriffs or something like that, so you get exposed to some really high level. I mean, we've had people from, I think that from NYPD have taught us this, and they've come to Elmo's Colorado and teach this training. So it's, it's really good, um, and it doesn't cost, best part about it, it's free, it doesn't cost us about it. If it's free, it's for me. Um, I've been training Sergeant Ortega, uh, on a lot of grant writing, um, and, and we still are aggressively going out and getting any grants as we can. And we just submitted one this week to Post for like ten thousand dollars for equipment and training. So hopefully that'll come through, and now he's working on, I've got him working on the, um, it's a traffic safety grant for, uh, the speed trailer, and along with that will come some money for speed enforcement and traffic enforcement. So on off-time, officers can go out and do, uh, uh, off-duty, uh, overtime for, um, traffic enforcement, so. Uh, that's gonna be, been doing a lot of work with Stephanie on security expectations for Sky High. Um, this is kind of a work in progress because we don't know really what kind of security we should or, or necessarily need there. I mean, you know, there's different models, like if you've got two hundred and fifty people, you should have two officers. What we don't wanna do is create this so that when people are having their events there, if they're having alcohol, we've pretty much said, if you're having alcohol, this is our facility, we have a responsibility to take care of it to make sure it's not getting damaged or tore up and stuff, so we're gonna, there's gonna be some requirements to have security there. Now, what does security look like? Is it gonna have to be uniform officers or what we call T-shirt, T-shirt security, you know, hire one of the local security firms to do that? Um, but we're trying to be really thoughtful about this to make sure that we're not creating an extra burden on whoever's renting it so that we're spending all this extra money on security that we don't necessarily need. So we're really trying to kinda work through that, um, you know, I, I think it's, I think it'd be irresponsible of us if we didn't require some kind of security, if they're, if they're serving alcohol there because as we know, you bring in alcohol and, um, shenanigans start to happen with it. So, and we don't want the shenanigans happening at our new facility and it getting tore up and stuff, so, uh, uh, we, we've done quite a bit of, uh, work on that so far and we're just kinda working through it, so. I, I wish, say we had it down to a science that this is the way it is, but again, still building the airplane as we're trying to fly it, so we'll get it figured out, um, you know, like Stampede, they always hire a bunch of us or, or just different ones, so. We'll, we'll get it worked out, um. Uh, I do wanna kinda talk on things that Judge Trujillo talked a little about, the drug house, um, ordinances that we started using. So last fall, last summer was the last time that we used this ordinance. I was just going through ordinances and I saw this one and then it was, uh, it was kinda under the nuisances on, on drug houses and stuff like that, and, and I asked, I said, hey, have we ever used this? And they're like, no, no, it's, we're never gonna use it, it's, it doesn't make sense. Well, it's not that it doesn't make sense, it's too hard to use and, and stuff like that. I'm like, okay, so why have we not given it a try? And so when we had a house down in the area, I'm like, alright, this is the perfect opportunity to try and use this ordinance. And, and again, as Judge Trujillo said, it had never been used, so we're like, let's give it a shot. And, and I mean, what's most, we do fail, I, I mean, at least we tried, so we gave it a shot and it worked. And then just by chance, uh, Officer Hill and then, um, CSO Lopez, they were like, hey, this actually worked out good and they had success in court with it. I mean, and that one was really complicated because the people who owned it said, well, we don't own it, we, we gifted it to a family member and it just turned into a big mess, and then they started trying to play games with us. Well, thanks to Judge Trujillo, he just kinda wanted to come to court, he just said, basically enough of your shenanigans and whatever and put a stop to it, and we got like the first conviction on that and stuff, and that worked really well. So then we just said, alright, so anytime, and I'll give Josh and, uh, Manuel the credit on this. As soon as we've been doing some of these, uh, um, search warrants, that house is the first thing they're doing, like, hey, let's use the drug, uh, the drug ordinance along with everything else, and it's been, it's, it's been way more successful than we thought it would. So kudos to those two, and then kudos to, uh, Judge Trujillo for, I guess, being aggressive in court on that and really pushing that going, yeah, we're not gonna just, uh, we're just not gonna give you a fine and let you do. He's, he's with those two, working with the people, trying to get it cleaned up, as well as Judge Trujillo pushing it, saying, this is what's going to happen, it's been successful, and we're going to continue to use that. Now, I will say, at some point here, uh, when we get caught up on a lot of other things, I wanna kinda do some upgrade to that ordinance, um, and do, add a little more teeth to it so it gives, makes it a little bit easier for him to prosecute when it comes up to court. And I've been, Manuel's been researching it, and I have too, that we're gonna try and add to that and then bring it before counsel for approval and, and try and make it even a little bit more aggressive, so. It works, and, and I think, um, with going into the, the whole thing with the DA, I, I mean, I think this is just a good opportunity for us to use our own local resources to take, take care of these problems and, uh, and it sure seems to be a lot more effective, so. Um, so, but again, I'm, kudos to Judge Trujillo for being pretty aggressive, and he's been really great to work with on, and pushing this through on us, so. Um, and I talked a little bit about that, the absentee owners, that is a struggle when we're trying to do some of this code stuff is tracking them down, and, and I, I know some of the citizens are like, well, why aren't you guys doing this faster? Well, we're trying, but we, it's tracking down the owners because, I mean, it'd be nice if we could just go, okay, we're gonna make this happen. But we have a leg, legal process that we have to follow, and part of that is notice to the owners and all that, and that unfortunately is taking time. We just, there's one that Manuel's been working on on South Broadway, right at the corner of Broadway and, uh, Roosevelt? Maybe somewhere right down in there, seven twenty-five down in that area? That has been a mess, and he's been working on this since last summer. And we finally, I think like three weeks ago, finally tracked down the owner, and they're like, well, yeah, these people aren't supposed to be, to your point, uh, counselors, um, the, the homeless, they just went and set up, set up a camp there and turned it into this massive structure of tents and whatever else. And we really didn't have any legal authority to boot them off there because we couldn't find the owner to find out whether they could even be on there, well, he finally did, and they said, yeah, I didn't. Well, he finally did and they said, yeah, I didn't, I didn't give them authorization to be on, just go squat on this open lot. So, we're finally getting some teeth and getting that moved on, so. Uh, with that, that's all I've got. Any questions?
How's the new officer working out?
Uh, you know, I don't even really know. They're just still in training, just getting started. So, any others? Plug in.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
City manager.
Good evening and happy Saint Patrick's Day to everybody. A couple of things, since George had brought up Sky High, Alcon is working away on their, their list. And so, um, the one area we were concerned about with, um, where the water runs in off of the street and then right down and floods in front of the dis, the, um, ramp for disa, for, I don't know what you call it, the disability ramp. That, they were, they took that concrete out yesterday and they were getting, they're putting a curb all the way across, so hopefully that'll take care of that problem. It's not really an area from walking across the street as a, as a, um, intersection area anyway. So, I think that's gonna work out better. We've, I've moved Stephanie and Oscar out there. They've got, they're actually officing then in the smallest conference room that they've got. And that's working out actually really well because we've still got a lot of people in there, um, wanting to come for tours and see what the space is and, and so, uh, time efficiency, uh, that's working out well. Uh, we've also got Stephanie working with the Stampede Committee to see what we can do to have, use their parking lot. That's bottom line, is using their parking lot. And I think that's gonna be fine. They're gonna want us to keep the trash picked up after events and that sort of thing. And so, we're also putting a, um, posted a new position for kind of a general maintenance slash custodian that will also help cover some of the issues we've got here, but really out there. Cause part of the challenge has been, you know, if she needs something, we're looking at Rob. And his guys really aren't maintenance, that type of a maintenance person. So, we're hoping to find someone that has more of that expertise. They can help Oscar and Stephanie set up the, the tables and take down the chairs and, and all that kind of stuff. So, we're, we're working through it. It's just turns out to be a little bit bigger than what we kind of expected for two people to be able to handle. And we've ordered more furniture. We met with Carla this last week. You know, we've got one event alone that is gonna take six hundred people to sit down. And so, we've had to order an additional three hundred and fifty chairs. And right now, that's all being absorbed through the Friends of Sky High and that loan and what Carla and Kathy had arranged. So, that isn't any expense on the city. Um, we likely will have one expense and we've got it budgeted. But we're going to take out the rock where they wanted to put the, um, food trucks. That was just a poor design. And so, if you've got someone in a wheelchair or a walker or a baby carriage or anything like that, you can't walk in all of that rock like that. And so, that rock will still be used, but we'll take it away. And, um, we've got, I think, a pretty reasonable, uh, estimate from ACI to go ahead and get that asphalted in that area. So, that'll take care of that mess. The Crane Festival was a success. The numbers were down just a little bit. They think they had about three hundred on Friday going through the, the vendor portion and about six hundred and fifty on Saturday. Uh, Anika left, but she said they served about a hundred people for breakfast, which was, she said they didn't make any money. It was actually, um, down from what they were anticipating. But there was also a lot of confusion on the time that the doors were gonna open and this is kind of a, little bit of a mix-up. Uh, we had, I thought the meeting with the Valley Theater was good. I think that you all need to, um, maybe have a meeting with amongst yourselves. Of course, we'll have to have it posted, but we're gonna have to figure out how you guys want to proceed. Do you want to explore actually putting it up for sale? Do you just want the, the volunteers to continue as they have? See how things go for the next six months? It's gonna be up to you. You wanna have another public meeting? And you don't have to decide tonight. Just, we're gonna need to kind of have some guidance and see what, what you guys are thinking. Uh, the One Cent Committee did meet this last week. And they, Mike and I worked on some bylaws. They, they gave us proposals on bylaws. I changed some of it. Mike changed a lot of it and, and they went ahead and adopted it. We'll put it on the, the agenda for the next meeting because they're not happy with us. Cause I, the one piece that they wanna put back in there is, um, maintenance of effort. And so, they want to make sure that the budget, that we don't spend all of the One Cent money just on Sky High and not budget anything else out of the general fund. Which they already have to, I mean, they've already kicked and screamed and said that we can't pay for FTEs for full-time employees out of that money. So, that will come out of general fund. I told them I would not support that. I don't want them to tie up your hands or future councils. They said that they would come in and give you a letter on why they think it's important. And this goes back to some other sales tax that was passed in the past. And then as the years went by, the perception with the public is that it was being misspent and, and, um, they were all pretty passionate about it. I just told them, I said, I'm just kinda disappointed because I, I've got more faith in, in myself and my staff and our council, so. You guys can decide and if we have to put it back in, we'll, we'll put it in, but. Um, Anita has been work, working very hard and got, had the auditors in here this week. They've left. They'll be wrapping up their report and they'll be, um, giving a report probably in May. And she's still whispering, but she wasn't very happy with them. Oh, back to One Cent again, real quick. We've got two vacancies. So, we'll be advertising, um, for people of interest, for you guys to appoint two more people. Um, Ken Hamco had stepped down and then Dennis.
Han.
Han, uh, resigned. He's leaving the community. Rob and I also met with, out at the airport this week and kind of getting an idea of what, what maybe be some additional maintenance that we may have to take care of out there. So, we're looking at some grant funding and see if we can't do that and get it all taken care of. Um, and then we do have a, a person that's going to be building a new hangar. So, we met with Excel so we make sure that where they, they want the electric lines, cause it'll be underground electric, doesn't interfere with other growth as it is aligned up with our master plan, so that'll take place. And then next week is spring, so. Spring's, spring is sprung. Any questions?
Sounds like you've been very busy. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate ya. Council committee, city commission and council reports. Thanks for being here, La. Thanks, Sandy.
Bye, Sandy. Bye-bye.
Mr. Lorenz.
Oh, it was nice to get some snow today. Snow packs almost average for the basin. The Sanlones are looking pretty good. The sun is a percent. We're sitting at about ninety-eight percent right now. The Sanlones are probably like a hundred and thirteen and the sunwinds are like seventy. So, some districts are getting ready to move their plans through. Hopefully, our, our plan gets moved through as well. Some District Five, let's watch some district what will not pump this year unless they have, each individual well owner has their own plans. It is fortunate that we live in a community that actually works together and isn't fighting amongst themselves because that's all that's holding them up. There's your one report, Del.
Thanks, Jason. Appreciate that. It was funny to me, they talked about all the snow we were supposed to get and we, and it didn't start till late, right?
Yeah.
Then I had to go deliver some stuff and when I got out to the county line, it's like, it didn't even look like it snowed up there and I had like three inches in my pickup.
Exactly.
Well, thanks, sir. Martha?
Uh, I just, I only have one thing tonight. I want to just express my, again, my appreciation that when I come in here, um, during the week, when everybody's working and, you know, I have business to take care of, there is just an air of calm, watery and contentment. It's just lighter in here. And while I would like to be able to say, oh, that's all because of our new city manager. I think that a lot of it is, however, she's not a magician and she couldn't do it without the cooperation and, 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 and just the desire to wanna make this a nicer place to work, a nicer place for our citizens to come into. And that includes everybody, city staff, police department, uh, public works, IT, every single department that we have. I think, um, I'm, I'm just seeing, I just see people smiling more and, and being more helpful. And I appreciate that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And we do, we've got a really good team. There's no I in team. Can't, we can't do it by ourselves.
Mr. Poster?
The Rotary Outdoor and Gun Show is April eighth through tenth this year. We moved it to the spring. We are already seeing lots of response from vendors. I believe we have three vendors from outside the valley already. So, we are looking forward to a, uh, very good show and we're excited about having it in the conference center at Sky High.
I'm looking forward to it as well. Um, for me, um, one, pay attention to your surroundings always. Keep an eye out. It's warming up, so these fine folks that wouldn't, just are dying to see Mr. Trujillo in court are out and about. I tried to help Chief catch one of them the other night, but it was a little slow to the draw, I guess. And, uh, Gigi, I've had some great compliments on you from city employees that were, um, very well received by them. So, I compliment you on that.
Thank you.
And thank you all for being here. We will, uh, adjourn the meeting to April.
Seventh.
Seventh.
Seventh. Thank you. Everybody have a good night.